Okay, thank you. Good evening and welcome to the City of Groton Committee of the whole for Monday night, October 28, 2024. I'm going to call the meeting to order. And Carter McCarver, please call the roll.
Mayor Hedrick, Deputy Mayor Depot, Counselor Piazza, Counselor Tally, and Counselor Sheffield are present.
Okay, we have quorum. New Minister of Referrals, Economic Development, presentation with Tricia Cunningham from Always Home. So Ciara, if you guys could come up. This is, this is informing?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. I've had the pleasure to meet with Ms. Cunningham to talk about the Wheels to Home.
Wheels to Work.
Wheels to Work program. And thought it would be great for her to come and actually explain it to us as a group and also have it on record for the residents to refer back to. I will pass it along to her and I will also just come around and give you guys some handouts about the program.
All right. Well, thank you for the opportunity. I was told I had like two hours to present. So is that about right?
You do, if you can answer that.
I'm just kidding. I'm usually pretty quick. You, you and I know each other from way back. So I'm Tricia Cunningham. I'm with Always Home. How many of you, just really quick, are familiar with even Always Home?
Thank you.
All right, so a couple of you. So we are, you might have known of an organization called MASH, Mystic Area Shelter and Hospitality. About seven years ago, we changed our name to Always Home. We are an organization based out of Mystic because when we were founded, Union Baptist Church donated office space to us and so we're still there to this day. They donate office space and utilities to us and it's fantastic. However, we serve all of Eastern Connecticut. We are what's called a family hub and we work with families that are referred to us through 211 that are, that are eligible for 211 services for, through the homelessness response network. So we work with literally homeless, on the edge of homelessness through our 211 work, but we also, our primary focus is prevention. We would like to work with families before they even get to that point where they qualify for 211 services. So we have a myriad of prevention programs. One of our primary prevention, homelessness prevention programs that we have at Always Home is we help with past due rent or going forward with rent. If someone is in an apartment or just is getting a new apartment, they don't have enough funds for their security deposit. It could be thousands of dollars upfront for a security deposit, first month's rent. So we can assist with that as long as that family has a path forward. A car repair, imagine you leave here today and your car breaks down and then you're faced with the decision to pay for your car bill, your car repair, or your rent that's due next week. So here you are, you're a family, you have a couple of small children, you're a single parent, and now your car is broken and you're faced with a car repair. Or do you pay rent? Or do you pay for the groceries? You know, what, what decision are you going to make faced with the current economic challenges? So Always Home can help with that short-term bridge emergency assistance with a car repair through, and we have some other programs too. We can assist with childcare or if someone's looking to enhance their, their work skills, we can help pay for something that isn't already covered through like American Job Center. Right now, there's so many programs available through American Job Center that we try to send people that way, but sometimes we've assisted with a CNA training. But one of the things I wanted to tell you all about tonight is our Groton Wheels to Work. And this is a special program that we expanded, expanded our Wheels to Work program through a pilot that was started through Wheels to Work, Groton Wheels to Work. And this was actually funded through Groton ARPA funds. So thank you for the Groton ARPA funds. This is funding that's going directly to residents. When we applied for this, these funds, none of it was going towards staff salaries or any overhead costs. Any of the ARPA funds goes directly to, direct client assistance. And inside this, it kind of gives you a checklist of what's required for this particular program because our program, Always Home, works specifically with families with minor children. So it has to be a parent with minor children or a grandparent that has custody of minor children and be working or a letter that they are starting work in the next, you know, when is their start date. And then we'll go through that list with them and we'll help with the car repair. But this is a very expansive program because one of the other things that we shifted, anything related to transportation costs. So a past due car vehicle tax bill is a big problem. If someone owns their back due taxes, they could get pulled over. And then what happens with that? Then they're impounded, then they're, they don't have a way to get to work. So we've been able to help stabilize some homes by helping with that back due taxes or a car getting registered or even getting their insurance squared away so that they can be stable and going forward. So this is, the way we expanded this program was to anything regarding that transportation. We can also assist with some other creative transportation challenges like Uber and things like that, but that's far more costly long-term. We can't help Uber forever, but if someone has their vehicle and they can get into a vehicle, then that's, that's one of the things that we'll do. So we're, we're loving this program while we have the funds and it's been, it's been a big safety net for a lot of families that we've worked with. And I'll share another couple pieces of information. We, our largest areas of clients served are Norwich, New London, and Groton. So for all of our clients, all of Eastern Connecticut, Groton is then that top three of families that we serve. We do like to work a lot with other agencies. So like Groton Human Services, we'll work closely with Groton Human Services and sometimes we'll each work with that family. So maybe we'll do a portion of that financial assistance and the Human Services will do a portion of that financial assistance. So, but we're always communicating with other agencies to make sure we're all working together and we know what, we know what everybody else is doing kind of thing. So we're all on the same page. So there's a lot of that kind of communication. So that's a little bit about Always Home. Our numbers year over year have gone up dramatically in terms of the clients served through 211 and our prevention clients. It's just a telltale sign of what's coming down the pike. The problems that start for families don't happen overnight and so sometimes the fix isn't overnight. So it, sometimes it takes some time to bring someone back to a stable, stable housing situation. So if you come across a family with minor children that is in need, send them our way. It would be ideal to kind of stop them, stop that from spiraling further, stop that instability in its tracks if possible before they get to the point where they need to be calling 211.
Open the floor for discussion. Deputy Mayor Depot.
I just want to say I know all about your program. I work for a local nonprofit that serves the Alice community and I have referred personally several people to your program and your processing has been super fast. They've been super happy. They've gotten childcare payments. I think one got help with their car registration fees, car repairs. So I just want to encourage people. I've heard great feedback about the handling of those cases and the speed with which you guys process them and it is a really valuable resource for people who sometimes don't have the resources in other places. So I want to thank you for all the hard work that you do because it, it really has made an impact on several people that I know personally and for myself, I am, part of my job is connecting people with resources and you guys have been a great resource for me to use. So thank you.
And thanks for mentioning the speed because we are a super small nonprofit. There's five of us and the amount of work that comes out of our office I think is extraordinary. But because we're a small, private nonprofit, the prevention side of things, we can turn that around really quickly. And there's been times when we've accessed a state program, but we might pay for that family while we wait to get reimbursed because that landlord wants that payment quickly. So that speed is important. So thank you for, for mentioning that.
Councilor Sheffield.
Yes, hi. Thank you for coming. What about for those single parents who don't have the ability to drive back and forth to work as far as type of training for those folks who maybe work, either work from home or get transportation to work? Is how is that?
There is, well, it depends, I mean, gosh, every situation is different, especially even with all the families that we work with. Every single situation is different. In our area, we talk about Wheels to Work. If they, if we needed to help with bus fare, we could help with that. We have a mom that just recently moved to Groton and she's working in a, she was in New London, so Groton's actually a better scenario for her because she was taking Ubers to a facility in Groton where she was working. So now she's a little bit closer and I'm hoping that now she'll get on the bus line to do that. But in terms of training from work from home, that's a great question. I'm not sure if American Job Center has job training programs for at-home training, so I'm, I'll have to look into that.
Well, especially for those who don't have the ability to get transported. And of course, the bus system here in Groton is not very good.
It's challenging throughout Eastern Connecticut, yes.
Well, especially in Groton, more so than in New London. The buses run much more frequently in New London than over here. So for someone that lives in Groton, it, you know, it takes a while to get to work from here, from brand for manner and all the way.
Yeah. And imagine then juggling a school schedule where you want to get back home before your kiddos get off the bus and then you're trying to navigate all that. We've kind of created a situation in Eastern Connecticut where private transportation has been, has become something that we, we need access to. So yeah, so work from home, there's a lot of situ, that I don't have a direct answer for, but if we had a family that came to us that wanted to work from home, I'm sure we could provide them some resources.
Yeah, as far as training.
Training. Because you might need some computer training, you know? So, so let's say they were doing some training through American Job Center, maybe we could help transport them, help them pay for the transportation to get there. But there is a program through, through the state now where if you go through that training, it's like a three-month-long, it's a training program, but you'll get rent covered for up to three months while you're in the training. So there's some really great creative programs that the state is doing. And I was at a conference last week where the governor stated that housing was their number, his number one priority. So hopefully we'll see more housing in terms of access and affordability down the road. But that's, you know, transportation is, has to go, be part of it.
Well, yeah.
Right?
If you can't get back and forth to work, you can't pay the rent.
Exactly.
So that's, you know, you can have housing, but you're going to need access to get to work.
Yes. Well, I can, I can. It sounds like we already have a council that might know about Alice, but I'm glad you brought up Alice, which who here knows who and what Alice is as it pertains to our local demographics and, you know, family, people working in the community. All right. So Alice is a United Way kind of standard. It's called asset, it stands for Asset Limited Income Constrained Employed. So it talks a little bit, I only brought a couple of these, but you can find it online and I actually emailed it, I did email it to you, right? Okay. So you can send it out later, but we'll pass one of those around for now. But Alice in the town of Groton, so what they look at is the economic thresholds, the, what people are making to sustain themselves. And we could also have someone from United Way come and present to you, which I think you, they would be a far superior presenter on this topic than I. But in Groton, those that are living and working in our community are at a threshold, at the Alice threshold or below is 40% in, in Groton. So that's Groton as a whole, right? But that's a staggering number. So everything that we can do for one family at a time at Always Home makes a huge difference. What they're saying is what it takes in 2021 numbers, so they've increased it for 2023, a survival budget for two adults with one infant and one preschooler needs to make $96,000 a year for their survival budget. For 2023, they increased it to $114,000, which is completely reasonable because they even put in here their housing cost was $990, which isn't, you know, no one sees housing costs for $990. But if you'll email that out and then, Mayor didn't get one, so it's, but you've probably seen it, but, but Alice is, a lot of our families are Alice or below. So we're working with low to middle, low to, moderate to low income families and that's who we're really focusing on with our work. But I would encourage you to have someone from United Way come and do a presentation on Alice as a whole and talk to you about the whole region and, and then bring it down to, to the Groton area. But it just underscores how everybody, many people that you come into contact every day are one small mishap, one small flat tire, a medical bill, you know, and you name it. A grocery, a trip to the grocery store, you know, will, will get them that step closer to homelessness because just the housing costs have gone out of reach and our wages across the board are not keeping on pace with the cost of living right now. But Erin, sorry.
Go ahead, Councilor.
Thank you for being here. It's so great to hear about this program. I'm just wondering, do both parents need to be employed or could it be that just one parent?
Nope, and there's different scenarios, so different, you know, depending on the situation, it would be ideal, but you know, you never know sometimes with childcare costs, right? That's another thing that we're seeing, a tremendous obstacle for people is the cost of childcare. It's, depending on your situation, it might make more financial sense to not be working because childcare is that costly.
But certainly they would still need transportation.
They would. But, yeah, yeah, yep.
Anyone else? Councilor Piazza.
Thank you for coming presenting. I appreciate that. I wanted to ask, so I work, I drive a school bus and there's a lot of people in the lot that fall. What you're saying is, oh, I have to wait a month, blah, blah, blah. I've heard the same story. I wasn't aware of this program, but they went to, you know, Human Services and so forth and sometimes they're, they're just over the edge. So it sounds like maybe something like this would help them, you know, food or something. But I was just talking to one of the students that I drive and they were saying that, that had the household, I'm not going to get too much into it, but was looking to get a different job. And so I had suggested coming because we always need bus drivers and they pay while they train. So I was just wondering, I have never, I haven't recently looked at job training, but do you know if they refer out to people to see if they want to get their CDLs paid training?
If we refer?
No, if, so you, you connect them up with job training?
Yeah, with the American Job Center, so.
Yeah, the American, I don't know if they have that within their list of jobs to refer people to.
I'm not sure about the American Job Center and like all of their list because I'm not, I'm not there, right? But I'm sure that's on the list, but a lot of it's like CNA training, you know, is a big one, offering free CNA training is, is one that is very common. So we've actually helped a couple of bus drivers too. There was one, one mom last year, if I recall, and that was the job that she was heading into, so. And thank you for being a bus driver, by the way. And then, and then coming here. Like that's, that's a long day.
But I was just, especially when you were talking about, you know, bringing your children and being there when your children get home, that's one of the primo perks of it is being able to, you know, bring your children with you and take them home with you.
Absolutely. And that's why every situation is different because every family we're working with is dealing with different situations, you know, in different medical situations. There's, there's a lot of challenges, so it's not like, it's not one size fits all. And so that's why we have a social worker and a case manager that works with our 211 calls, but our social worker like takes time to like ask all the questions and try to really figure out, meet, meet them where they are and figure out what kind of resources they can pull from already and try to help get them in the right direction.
Anyone else? Deputy Mayor Depot.
I just want to add on top of this, the, you know, the Alice community is a, a big chunk of the community, so they don't reach the resources for below poverty level, but then they're kind of left out. And I think that's why, you know, the mayor and I volunteer every month at the food box distribution and we, or the mobile food pantry from United Way. And we always say, if this food will help you pay a different bill, come get food. There is no requirement for it. So I, this is another one of those programs where you don't have to be destitute already. We're trying to prevent that from happening. So if this will help you pay another bill similar to the way United Way does their food program, please use the resources as much as possible because we're trying to prevent crisis, not fix crisis after the fact.
Exactly.
Councilor Sheffield.
Now, this is being funded by ARPA currently, correct? Now, how long do you think this funding that you have will last for?
Well, we have another this year, so probably this year and then it'll be gone.
All right, so it has to be used?
It has to be used, yeah.
By the end of, for?
I think December of 2020s or?
26.
I think it's 2026. So, but it'll be gone before then.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now, what alternative option, once the ARPA funding is gone, what's your, what's that next step to keep things going financially?
Great question. We do a ridiculous amount of fundraising, so I invite you all to come to our gala on April 4th. I'm just kidding, but I'm not. But we do a ridiculous amount of grant writing, fundraising. The only state funding we receive is for our 211 work. Other than that, everything is through things like this, our gala, our annual appeal. We work, we do the Chowder Festival in Old Mystic Village. So the only state funding we receive is for being a family hub for 211, for the homelessness response system. Other than that, we are going to try to find as many resources as we have. And that's, that's also why our office is in Mystic where it, you know, where we have the free, free rent, which is fantastic. So that's, that's my not-so-bright, sunshiny answer is we'll, we'll work to find a way, right? But it won't be at this, at the same level. Yeah, so that's our job is now to find other, other new fundraising opportunities and grant grant opportunities and, and new donors, quite frankly, because then that's, the more money we bring in, the more we can put out into the community.
Okay, Councilor Piazza.
Thank you. I saw also too that you, about vehicles, donate a car. Now, is that something that should be functional or do you have mechanics on hand that could tune it up?
Yeah, so we're not like NPR where we'll like pick it up and, and take anything. So we do want something that is in good working order. We can put a little bit of money into it. So we have had a car where we've put new tires and brakes on it and then we've donated it. So we've put, you know, 1,000, 1,500 into the vehicle, but if it's to the point where we have to put $4,000 into it and then it's still questionable, that's not the car for us because that's not a car for a family, that then we don't want to give them a headache. We want to give them something that will be good. So that's not as common, that we'll get a car donated to us that we can, we can take and, and have, know that in good conscience, it'll be a good car for a family. But yeah, we welcome anybody that wants to donate a vehicle that is still, still in good shape, but you know, it might need a little bit of work, you know, like the standard maintenance, like tires and oil change and brakes, but not anything that has like 400,000 miles on it. I would politely decline, but yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you for presenting.
Wow, thank you for all of the questions and engagement. I really appreciate it. It shows how much you all care and care about your community. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Fire Department, HVAC Replacement Company Two, Chief.
Good evening. All right, I believe you have some backup material in your pads there, I guess. So the HVAC unit at Company Two, which is the Eastern Point Station, there's actually two units on that rooftop. One has failed. So it's 22 years, they're both 22 years old. That's how old the building is. The one that failed is a six-ton unit and we're looking to replace that. It, it has given us a lot of problems. We spent a lot of money fixing it. 16 months ago, we replaced a compressor for a little over $4,000. And we had done quite a few other smaller, you know, thousand-dollar heat exchanger, things of that nature. So when we did the compressor, we thought, okay, we would get a little longer life out of it and that was not the case. So the compressor went again, that is the problem. So rather than spending another $4,400, this is the next, or the better option. This unit that we are looking to replace, we're looking to replace it with a seven-and-a-half ton, if you look at the estimates, a seven-and-a-half-ton unit, a bigger unit. And that's because our HVAC company, they suspect that when those units were placed on the roof, they were placed in the wrong position. There's a seven-and-a-half-ton and a six-ton, but the six-ton actually heats and cools a larger area in the building. So their, their guess was that when they were placed, when the building was built, they, they might have been placed in the wrong place. So the seven-and-a-half-ton that's currently on the roof, we have very little problems with. We haven't done anything but maintenance in, I don't know how many years. So that's why we're looking to replace with a seven-and-a-half-ton. We got three estimates. We're hoping to waive the bid process because obviously we're looking at the winter. We would need to, you know, I'm here tonight, we would need to pass a resolution next week and then sign a contract and then they would have to get us on the schedule and get the equipment here and to do the job. So trying to do an RFP would take a couple of months and we would, by then be in the deep winter, so.
Okay, open the floor for discussion. Councilor Sheffield.
Currently, from what I'm looking at, this resolution, I guess for Ron's is the low bid currently. That's on the resolution from RB Kent, is that the?
So we're waiving the bid process and not doing a formal bid. Chief did reach out and get three quotes. I believe that was the low quote.
Correct.
Okay. I know they're a, you know, vendor that we've always used here in the city, so.
Correct, they are frequently used.
Yep. Now, how long do you expect this HVAC? What's the length of time that this will last before a new one will need to be?
You know, I, I think a normal length of time would be the 25-year range. As I said, these, both units up on, on their roof there are 22 years old. So we will start to look at, you know, maybe through capital planning to replace the other one, but we've had no problems with that other one. It's been this one that we've had years of problems that we've been chasing and again, I don't know if it's because it's undersized. It's a possibility. That was RB Kent's, you know, that's who we use normally. They're the ones that said, they suspected that they might have been placed in the wrong positions. So, so they did come in with the estimate and, and had their duck people, company, come in and check the ducks, make sure they were sized properly to be able to handle the larger unit. And they said, yes, they, that the ducks were fine, they could handle the seven-and-a-half-ton.
Now, is that similar, now what's the size at the other station HVAC, which, you know, the size of?
At Company One?
Yeah.
At the, we, we have split units there. So it's not a, it's not the, you know, a large unit that, it's the individual like you see at people's houses. We have multiples that cover different areas of the firehouse.
Okay. That's all from me.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Deputy Mayor Depot.
Is there a warranty on the work that they're going to do at all or on the materials?
I don't know. I could, I don't know that for sure. Usually they warranty their work. The compressor was warranted the, for a year, unfortunately, because I did look into that when it was, you know, 16 months and it died again. So I did not get warranty information, but I can and I will.
So we're replacing one compressor, but there is another compressor that's the same age as this one?
Yes, a whole, it's a whole large, like you see on the rooftop, HVAC unit, yes, correct.
So are you expecting to have to replace that other one in say three to five years?
Yes. Yes, I think that would be prudent. Again, we haven't had any problems, but we are 22 years in, so you know, that we're getting to the end of life, normal life. This one is emergent because it keeps breaking down. And again, like I said, we, the compressor's gone, it would cost us $4,400 to replace it and we just did it 16 months. And again, like I said, we, the compressor's gone, it would cost us forty-four hundred dollars to replace it, and we just did it sixteen months ago. My guess is that in sixteen months, it would need to be replaced again. Uh, there's something wrong that's causing it to seize up.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Uh, where am I going now? So, I will take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of four November.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Did you say, did you?
I said aye.
Okay, Councilor Patterson?
Aye.
Okay, alright.
Thank you.
We have unanimous consent, so that's good. Thanks, Chief. Alright, Parks and Right Tennis Court Reconstruction? Alright, Mary?
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. So, I'm here tonight. Uh, we, uh, took the tennis court reconstruction out to bid in September. On September twenty-fifth, we got six proposals back to do the work on the tennis courts at Washington Park. And our recommendation is to go with Classic Turf, which came in as the low bid, but I also reached out. I didn't go to the reference sheet, I went to their website, and I reached out to Killingley. Killingley had, uh, work done by Classic Turf about ten years ago, um, and their courts are still in pristine condition. I talked to the former director in Brookfield, who had his done about eight years ago. Now, he's in Ridgefield, and he had him, used the same company about three years ago. Um, and, uh, been very happy with the company, um, the references I got from different communities within Connecticut. Um, I feel comfortable using this company to move forward with the project that, um, we'd like to get done up at the park.
Okay, open the floor for discussion. Deputy Mayor Depot?
My first question was gonna be, how many of their former clients you called? So, thank you for doing that, cause it is tedious. I, calling references is not always.
And I didn't go off their sheet. I went to their website. I didn't go with the ones that they sent us.
Hmm.
I, um, actually went on their website and found others.
And it looks like the quote is come, gonna come in, um, less than the estimate that we kind of put, at least on the last, um, ARPA, um, project list. So, that's nice, we'll be able to spend money somewhere else. Um, and my only other question is, I think when I looked at the proposal, it had an estimated start date. But is this something that's gonna be able to get done before winter, or is it gonna be done in the spring? Cause I know it's already pretty cold.
Yeah, it's, it's gonna be a twelve-to-fourteen week project, so I'm, I'm thinking the spring. I didn't see the cover sheet with what they put for start date, so.
I don't know if they put a date. I think they, uh, well, they put that they could.
Well, if this is concrete, I don't know, they don't wanna get into the winter.
No, right, exactly. That was, that was my question. So, um, it's something that's gonna be done early spring?
Yeah, so on, on the bid sheet, they put within ten days of notice to proceed, but with a twelve-to-fourteen turnaround. But so most likely, it'll end up going into the springtime before it is completed.
So, my only concern with that is I know that there is at least one school in the area that, whose team uses our courts. And I think it's in the spring that they use them.
Correct.
Um, are they, my only concern would be that they're made aware that that's not gonna be available.
I've already, I've already talked to the athletic director of the school that uses our courts, and in share, I told him, I didn't know exactly when he asked me the questions. I, I would tell, I would tell them, I, once this got approved, and I had a little better, better understanding from the company, what their timeline was, I would let them know. But he knows as of right now that there's potential, come the third week of March, that they won't be available to them. That's usually when the high school season starts.
So, they can start looking for other?
So, they can find another location.
Locations of new tennis courts.
Yeah, it's tough, but obviously, we wanna get it done as soon as possible, so, um.
And correctly, right? We wanna make sure we're in the right weather and environment and stuff to do it correctly.
Perfect. I'm very excited to get this done, so thank you.
I'm excited.
Any other que- Councilor Sheffield? Um, yeah, I mean, my concern would be, uh, was again, uh, the, the warranty, I guess, and they're guaranteeing twenty years structurally for, uh, cracking and so forth. So, uh, uh, that's very important, because, uh, a lot of people have, uh, you know, issues when things crack after maybe a couple of years. And of course, we've done, we've done the resurfacing before in prior years. And, uh, you know, now, now that we're getting a, a whole new thing put together, um, hopefully, it's gonna be worth the price that we're, we're putting out for this. And, uh, you know, cause I'm a little leery, cause of the four seasons to where, you know, uh, will the surface hold up in the, you know, four-season environment? So, if they're gonna guarantee that this is gonna work out for twenty years, uh, you know, I'll be happy about it, so.
They're a Connecticut company, so I'm assume, you know, and the con, the product they're using is concrete that's designed for our environment here in Connecticut.
Um, and the next thing, um, I saw was the, um, I guess the coating, I guess for bubbling and peeling now.
Mm-hmm.
Now, that's ten years. Now, will they come back to redo that? Or do we have to search elsewhere once that's portion hap- you know, starts to erode and, you know, it needs, you know, touch-ups? Uh, will they be the ones to do it for us at a price? Or will that be in-house in your department that would have to do?
That we definitely would have to contract that out.
Okay, that's what I kind of figured, okay.
Yeah, and if, if there's, if they're still around, we'd definitely go back to them.
Okay.
Yeah? I mean, ha- tennis courts, just if, some information, all the lines on a tennis court are all hand, hand painted on. It's not by machine, it's all freehand, but they, you know, so it, it's a lot, there's labor intensive in there. So, um, obviously, if they, if anything happened within that ten-year period, we'd definitely be going back to them, because it's their product that failed. If anything happened after that, then, you know, if they're still around and, uh, we're happy with what they've done, then we definitely go. Whoever's here at that point might go back there to them.
Now, I noticed there's a deduction of the tennis courts, and there's now the six pickleball courts. Will that suffice? Cause I know a lot of people scramble to get courts.
Yes.
And there'll be a reduction of that for people who wanna play tennis. Would that be an issue potentially? You know, if people don't wanna play, play pickleball, they want that, you know, back and forth.
So, we, we researched this back in two thousand and twenty-one in regards to usage. Um, our, our courts were very limited use for tennis. We've been inundated by requests for pickleball. Uh, to the point where they've actually came in and asked if we could use the auditorium in the, you know, during the, the workday and, and different times that, that, can we paint lines? Can we chalk lines? Can we tape lines? So, the amount of interest in pickleball with not having courts and the decline of, and when we used to, uh, in tennis, it kind of balances it out. When we had people use our tennis courts, they could only use four at a time, like the, even the high school, they don't get all use of all six. They only used four, and at times, I think they only used, they only required three, cause they didn't have, you know, that's how many were used during the course of the, uh, time. So, we did do some research on that. Um, and I, it's, four will be, I, I think will work very nicely up there for the groups that do use it. And then pickleball, I think will probably be inundated with, uh, use.
Now, speak, uh, yeah, cause I, my thing would be in the wintertime, have we thought about doing any pickleball inside?
We'd have to figure that out, see how prop- how popular it becomes, and then see what the use of the, uh, I mean, there's, you can always get portable, um, equipment to do inside. And, you know, we've, we've looked at maybe doing it in the auditorium in the evening hours where it's, cause it's loud, it's a paddle hitting a hard ball. Um, whether or not, it wouldn't, it would be conducive during a work day, but on a weekend or, or after hours, if it, it gets that popular, we could look at that avenues of what we can do inside.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this? Councilor Talley?
Are the courts usable now until when this work begins?
So, we close our courts down for the season at the end of October, usually the last Friday of October, which would have been last week.
Okay.
Um, last Friday. I had a conversation with the mayor earlier in the week, and we shut them down as of last Monday. Uh, we have, um, so we have a lot of things that have to get winterized and taken care of before, and we try to do it before Thanksgiving. So, we start at the tennis courts, we take the nets down, the poles down, we turn off the lights. Then we do the restroom on Park Avenue. Then we do, it takes us a week with all three guys to take the fence down on Field Three, and put up all the hay bales and everything else to get everything ready for sledding. And we like to have all that done before Thanksgiving, cause sometimes we have snow on, around Thanksgiving, and sometimes we don't. But we wanna be prepared and have everything safely in place. So, we kind of have a progression to get there. And so, the tennis courts as of, um, last Monday were all shut down.
And we had not had any, any significant use of the court, and it got cold. Uh, so I, I agreed to go ahead and take the nets down and close court down for the season. It's only one week early, so, actually, four days early.
Four days, yep.
It worked out okay.
And it's hard, cause we do get these falls like we have, I call it, I, I think it's spring right now instead of fall. But we get this odd weather where we have the seventy-degree weather, and then we have this thirty-two-degree weather, so. Um, but we, it kind of helps us stay on track to get everything done.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, any other questions or comments on this? Okay, I'll take a motion to move it.
I have a quick question.
Okay, Councilor Patterson?
Um, so, have, given that it's like, something that's like a new, uh, not phenomenon, but like, it's something that's picked up. Have we ever looked into like purchasing like, uh, like those, almost like puzzle pieces that can go on top of a tennis court? Or is actually building, uh, a football, uh, court itself? Just in case it doesn't, uh, end up staying as like, uh, a new thing that people are, uh, interested in?
I don't.
What? Can you rephrase your question?
So, like, so instead of like building like an actual like, uh, pickleball court, like, what if you got like a puzzle piece that can go on top of a court? And you're able to like, have like a multi-purpose court? Just in case it doesn't turn into something that like everybody's like loving in the next two to three years. But then you can also utilize that inside if, if possible, I don't know.
I, I, I'm not familiar with any kind of structure you can put over existing tennis courts.
So, so, so basketball, right? So, they have config courses, uh, config courts, but then they also have like puzzle pieces that, that sort of like shock to your knees and stuff to that extent? Something like similar to that versus just going straight out and, um, build like a pickleball court right there on the tennis court?
I'd have to do some research on that.
Something that's like, uh, that they're able to pick up and put down versus just having it on the, like, up there.
Uh, oh.
So, you're, you're talking about something that would be temporary, that it could be a tennis court one day, and then put pickleball court the next day? Okay?
I'd have to research if something like that exists and where I would store it.
Yeah, I'd be similar to like, let's say, an indoor arena. You have hockey, and then you put basketball and your piece together, put the court together at, on top of the, you know, so it's something like doing it outside, putting a piece together over top of the.
So, like, so like the Connecticut Sun Arena that they play basketball on one of them, but then they put it together for a concert?
Right, right.
Okay.
Yeah, something, something, uh, but it'd be on the outdoor scale of, you know, piecing it in.
We can look into that. I, I mean, I, I don't know where we would store something like that, but, I, I mean, it could be something. I, I understand indoors and how that works. I don't, I'm not sure how that would work outdoors.
Right, yeah, yeah, you'd have to find storage, obviously, to put something like that. And that's just in case.
Yep.
The phenomenon of pickleball doesn't.
A court that's like similar to that type of, uh, what, I don't know if I wanna call it, but, uh, playing surface where somebody will be able to, uh, utilize something to that effect. Something to look into though.
Yes, absolutely.
Any, any other questions or comments? Deputy Mayor Depot?
I just wanna comment, I, I know, um, a few years ago, I worked at the YMCA, and I traveled around the area fairly often. And I don't think that pickleball is going anywhere. Um, there is quite a huge population. Um, you see over in Stonetown, they have, those pickleball courts are, uh, why, are used a lot. People are there almost every time I drive by, even in the cold sometimes. Um, and, uh, they're, they have increased year over year over year usage. They just rebuilt outdoor, um, courts, I believe, at the Y in Mystic, um, and tennis courts. So, um, although I, I think it's obviously smart to think of that, I, I don't foresee that being an issue we're gonna have at all.
No, I don't think so.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll take a motion to move this to Mayor and Council meeting in November fourth.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Councilor Patterson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. Alright, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Alright, electrical switchgear replacement, Bill?
Okay, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Okay, so, I'm here tonight to request approval to enter into an, an agreement with L. Helsner Electric Company for three hundred and eighty-four thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. The scope of the project is to replace the electrical switchgear that provides electricity to this whole facility here, okay? Um, a little bit about the system. The municipal building has two electrical sources of power. One's Groton Utilities, one is an emergency power generator that's out and back. Both of those sources feed into a transfer switch that's what's in, within the building. If we lose power, it automatically switches to the generator. That's how it works. It comes in that way. After the transfer switch, it then feeds a large electrical switchboard, and that's what distributes the power throughout the whole building. Very large metal cabinet, about three times the length of this building. Much similar to the panel in your house, but at a much larger scale, okay? The, the location of that room is downstairs in a lower level. It's in an electrical room. The existing panel has no capacity for growth. It is fully loaded. There are no parts available, so in summary, it's at its end of service life. Um, upgrades to, in doing so, would be to transition from having fuses, and then going to a circuit breaker setup. With the circuit breakers, they're much safer to operate for the electrical staff. Um, with a fuse panel, you have to open up the door, expose yourself to live electricity, put all the PPE on, and replace fuses with the circuit breaker. You don't have to penetrate into the cabinet. Um, they can be tested every five years. That's part of the, um, longevity for the, the equipment, so like a PM. You can also install ground fault circuit interruptors as, as we needed, as we do typically throughout the day, uh, today. Um, the original equipment, um, it was put in the building in nineteen sixty-four. It's been there for, the expected life on that equipment is thirty to forty years. So, we are twenty, twenty-five years past its longevity for that system, okay? The cost of the proposal is, uh, three hundred and forty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars. I'm asking for a ten percent contingency, uh, of thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. The total for the project will be three hundred and eighty-four dollars, four hundred and fifty dollars. That's what I'm requesting your approval for. Um, it will be funded by the American Rescue Plan Act, so ARPA funds. Any questions? I'm happy to help.
Hang open for discussion.
Sure.
Deputy Mayor Depot?
So, obviously, we put this out to bid. We, uh, in the, uh, resolution, it says that we had a pre-bid meeting and eight organizations attended.
We did.
But we only got one bid. Do we know why that is, or?
So, that's a great question. So, um, it's difficult to get the parts, um, and that's one big constraint for people. Um, several of the, uh, people that came in and bid were in for a short period of time. They kind of looked at it and they, and they left. Um, there were a couple of people that stayed to the end. I spent, uh, quite a bit of time with them, almost an hour, and I honestly thought that we were gonna probably get two bids out of the thing. Um, one person, um, provided the bid. Uh, he and his organization stayed the longest. They were very interested. Walked the whole facility, you know, the generator, the transfer switch, everything. And I felt pretty good about them. I did do a check. Uh, they've done some work up at Yukon. I spoke to the director of the facilities up there. Very happy with their quality of work. I also spoke to, um, I think it was, I don't know if it was Lisbon or Basra. But I had a good feedback from the second organization as well, Hebron, I'm sorry. So, Hebron, so I had, you know, I felt pretty confident with these guys, large organization. That's just how it worked out. Deputy Mayor?
And, uh, is this project gonna be overseen by you?
I will, yeah, absolutely assist with the director of public works, for sure. Yeah, it's.
But Bill started this, I don't need him to see it through.
I'm very strong electrical, and I'm happy to, whatever.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other que-
Any other questions or comments? Councilor Piazza?
Thank you, Mayor. So the, when they take out the old one, do we get any monies for it?
Oh, I'll have to look into that, maybe some scrap value, Ron.
Was that even part of the proposal, because you're moving it to the other room?
So what we're gonna do, so there's two electrical rooms downstairs. One where the current built, the, the casework is, the second one is where the transfer switch is. We're gonna install the brand-new equipment in the transfer switch room, which will allow us to transfer the loads over, schedule the shutdowns, there'll be some impact to the building, but it will be scheduled, right? Part of the project, I asked for them to remove that and get rid of it. It's scrap metal, I don't know what the value would be, so it is in scope to remove it.
Okay, so if it's in scope, then there would be no value on our side, it would be part of the cost of the bid itself?
To remove it.
Yeah, if that was part of the scope.
So we, we really don't know if we would get monies for it and what it would be worth? We don't know.
Correct. It's built into their price, however they figured it?
Yeah. It's, it's very large, we wouldn't want to leave it for us either.
Right, no, I wonder, right.
If there were any value.
Right, or even if they did the removal and split it, you know, if that would even be in the bid, you know, we'll remove it and get it somewhere where it can be scrapped for monies, and then we give you so much of it or whatever, whatever percentage.
I think Ron's correct, so they took that into account probably when they come up with their value.
Okay, and they're pricing.
We can scrap it, we can get this much, and, yeah.
Gotcha.
Yep.
Gotcha.
Deputy Mayor Depot?
Good question.
Can you remind me, why, why are we replacing this? Is it malfunctioning? Is it just age?
So it's, it's, well, expected life on it's probably forty years. It went in the building in nineteen sixty-four. It's an old fuse cabinet, it's beyond its end of life, I can't get any parts for it, so if anything failed on it now, I would have quite some time to restore power to the building. So all of the utility comes in as great, so the Groton Utilities power, the generator power, the transfer switch is fairly new, maybe five or six years old. It's a high-end switch, the switch that we put in five years ago, if we store, if we saw a storm coming, I could flip the whole building over onto the generator, nobody would even know, we could ride through the storm, it's, it's a high-end unit. The only obstacle that we have, the only risk that we have, is this particular piece of equipment. And again, it's beyond its end of life, so this really puts us in a great reliable position once this is done.
We had a situation four, three, four years ago where we had to put it, put it down, come up on the generator, and when we actually went in and opened it up, I got invited down there to look at it, and I said, oh my God, this is, this is nuts, it doesn't make sense. I mean, you got actual copper bars that are bolted in, I mean, there's no breakers, none of Frankenstein switches, nothing. And so I said, we need to evaluate this, we started evaluating it, then we're now gonna replace this, and this will bring us up to speed, and that will remove any downside risk from failure, so that's why we're doing this. We're trying to modernize the building to, it's not, it's not a whim, it's, it's, the concern is if it fails, we couldn't get replacement parts, and the generator is only gonna last so long, and you gotta keep filling it up and things like that.
Well, the problem is too, so if that fails, no matter if we have the generator source, I still can't get power through that old equipment, so it really is, we're down, you know? So I've replaced several of these, other organizations, Pfizer and a few other spots, it's, we, we got our monies worth out of this one.
And, and one of the things that brought a concern is that, at the time, TVC was still running through here, we still have the head end now, and there's still a little bit of a concern, but there was a concern that if something happened to the generator and we lost power, then we would have to pay back TVC for lost revenue and those kind of things, and that's what raised a sense of urgency for me, that from a downside risk, we needed to get out underneath that. So that's what's driving.
Replacing this piece of equipment will greatly increase our reliability.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments?
I, I have one question.
Councilor Patterson?
In the future, do we have like any type of like monitoring service in case the switch fails again to like, make sure that we're, to be built before it actually fails, or like any type of like, things happen in place?
So that's a great question. So when you switch over to the circuit breakers, you then have a preventative maintenance plan. So we'll have somebody come in every five years, go through the breakers for us, make sure that we're in compliance, it, it just, Councilor, it, it just puts us in a much, much better spot. So we'll also have redundancy, if I lose one breaker and it fails, I've had the, I'll have the ability to switch over to a spare breaker. Right now, we are, we are maxed out down there and beyond that.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, I'll take a motion to move this to the Mayor and Council meeting of November fourth.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have unanimous.
Thank you all.
So it passes.
Thank you.
All right, the last one is Bill Memorial Library Fence. So for those of you that may remember, we had, there was a fence that was donated, or actually given by President Jackson, Andrew Jackson, and we had some pieces, parts that were up, we had other pieces that were in the cellar, so we removed those because at the time when the Friends of Anna Warner Bailey Chapter of the DAR was in existence, they had requested that the fence be donated to the Bill Memorial Library, and so we took that before we put it on the market, we took that fence and we brought it here, it's in the, one of the outbuildings in Public Works, and we've talked to Wendy Connell of the Bill Library, and what they're gonna do is, they're gonna get the fence refurbished, and then they're gonna put that around the monument headstone of the Bill family up at the library as a decorative piece that'll also keep people from climbing on, on the headstones and things like that. So that's what the purpose of this is. And I'll open the floor up for discussion. Deputy Mayor Depot?
Thank you, Mayor. I think this is a great idea. Did we get this item appraised at all to know what the value of it is?
No.
My only concern is, you know, as a council voting, to donate something that could be valuable, I, my, my instinct is that a resident's question, first question is gonna be, oh, how much was it worth? And it could be worth nothing, it could be worth a ton, who knows, but without doing some sort of appraisal, we don't really know that. Is that something that would be difficult to do because it's a historical object? Do you know?
I have no idea how we'd even go about that. Trying to keep my personal and the finance side of it, I think it puts it in a good spot where it's still in the public as opposed to a private. This was part of the purchase of the house at one oh eight Thane Street, and it was just taken and removed from there, so to me, I think it makes sense that it's still, it's still in a public place and still for public viewing. We have donated to other organizations items of value in the past. We've donated a former fire truck to, I believe, another fire department in Vermont, we've donated a old Parks and Rec pickup truck to the public schools, so we have done donations that may have had some value to it, but I don't, I don't know how we'd go about getting it appraised.
Okay. Like I said, I, I still think this is a great idea, I just, for my, you know, you know, representing people, I just wanted to ask the question. And I, the Bill Library does a great job preserving history, so I think it is a, a great spot, and it's right next to the monument, so I'm all for donating this to them for that purpose.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Councilor Piazza?
When they're planning to place it around the headstone, is it something that can be, since it's in pieces, is it something that somebody can steal? Like somebody could actually lift it and take?
Well, you're gonna need some oof, because that's heavy.
Well, I didn't know how many pieces it, yeah, I know raw.
This is not aluminum fence, this is-
Yeah, I know, it's wrought iron. Yeah, but I mean, I'm asking, it says in pieces, so I didn't know if there was a smaller piece that somebody could actually lift and take.
Small is relative, so if you look at the pictures, you can see some of the sizes of the pieces, but even the small pieces are not, it's not like you're gonna just, I don't think you're gonna pick up-
Tuck it underneath your arm and walk.
No. Because there was, there was one piece that was in the ground that I was gonna, I mean, it was loose, right? And I'm ready to go down there and pick it up and take it down to the cellar? Yeah, that wasn't gonna happen anyway.
Okay.
We needed some equipment to get it out.
And once they actually refurbish it, is it something that's gonna be, need to be done every year, every five, ten years, or once done and done?
Not my concern. I mean, because we're, so one of the things we talked about, I, I reached out to Joe Del Cruz down at Hillary and asked him to come look at it years ago, and he has the capability to, to sandblast it and then galvanize it and then paint it, and when I talked to Wendy Connell about it, she said, and we weren't gonna do that. I wasn't, the city wasn't gonna do that, but I wanted to make that introduction, and he said he could do it. But when I talked to Wendy last week, and she came and, and looked at the pieces, she said, we'll take it like this and we will, we will get it done, the, the library themselves will take care of getting it, first of all, getting it refurbished, and then determining how they're gonna do it, you know, are they gonna, are they gonna bracket it together, you know, are they gonna try to weld it? Because that could be a problem with putting it together. Are they gonna try to put brackets on it mechanically, and, you know, they're going to figure that out.
Okay, thank you.
So once the library, so what I'm asking the council to do is, is approve, giving it to the Bill Library, they will come, we will help them get it to where they're gonna put it, and unless they have a truck available, and then we're done, we're out of it, the city will, has, will not have anything else to do with it other than go admire it when it's installed.
Yeah, I think it's very moving with this piece of history that we actually have.
Yep, absolutely. Any other questions or comments? Did you have a-
You answered it already.
Okay. Anything else? All right, I'll take a motion to move this to the Mayor and Council meeting of November fourth.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion in a second, any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Councilor Patterson?
Aye.
Okay, we have unanimous, so it passes. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Hey, we have a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Wait, adjourn?
Yeah.
I've got one thing. I sent an email to everyone. I, I received a, a request-
It's not on the agenda.
Hold on, it's, it's not on the agenda, so we can, you can talk about it in our communication reports next week.
Aye.
So how do you vote?
To adjourn.
We have a mo, we have a motion on the floor, we're in the middle of a vote, so what's your vote?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you, Council.